October 21st, 2020, meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commissioners, or the Thurston County Planning Commission will begin with introductions of planning commissioners. Scott Nelson, District Three. Don.
Don DeHande, District One.
Doug.
Doug Carmen, District Two.
Ed. You're muted, Ed.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Ed Fleischer, District Two.
Jim.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Eric.
Eric Casino, District Two.
Donna. You're muted, Donna.
Okay, yeah.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Okay, Donna Nifferson, District Three.
Okay, I think that's everybody. Did I miss anyone?
Did you, did you, did you get Donna?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, that's, thanks.
Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any changes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye, aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from October 7th, 2020 and accept the audio as the official record?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accept, of approving the minutes from October 7th, 2020 and accepting the audio as the official record, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Public Communications. So as usual, three minutes, please start with your name and either an address or some sort of location as to where you are in the county. And I will try to get the timer up and we're going to start with Barry Halverson. Are you there, Barry? There you go.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks Scott. My name is Barry Halverson. I'm at Lake Lawrence. I'm with the Lake Management District and on the Coalition, Lakes Coalition with John Woodford. I'm gonna speak for a few minutes about the Shoreline Master Program that we just found online, I believe it was yesterday, it came on with the new changes that Andrew had put on there. This was, this is specifically for Andrew. I don't see any changes or updates or line item crossouts or anything on Appendix A, environmental designations. Something I have specifically addressed with Mr. Defobis and pointed out errors in that document. They say it's been updated with all the changes, but that Appendix A has not been updated, Andrew. Second, I appreciate the text box notes for Chapter 19, 400, 100, Existing Development. Lake Lawrence residents are in support of the wording for conforming. I also appreciate the addition of paragraph B1G under Chapter 19, 400, 100. And Chapter 19, 400, 120, the buffers, we have consistently pushed to return buffers to the 1990 SMP and the 2012 CAO buffers. Not the buffers as shown in current document. To us, this is a major issue that needs to be addressed. Also, read Chapter 19, 500, 100, Permit Application Review and Permits, Paragraph C4HI. Construction of docks, fair market value does not exceed 22,500. I appreciate changing that from 10,000 as it was, but that's still not enough. Depending on the lake, the lake that you're in, the depth of that lake and the length of the dock, about any dock over 50 foot costs much more than $22,500 to install. This needs to be carefully looked at. Some lakes are deep and they can put a 10, 15, 25 foot dock out. Lake Lawrence is not that way. Many of our docks run 100 feet just to get to three and a half to four foot of water. Recently, one of our residents out there had to pay $35,000 to have a 75 foot dock installed. Read Paragraph 19, 600, 160, mooring structures. Subparagraph Bravo R, grading for docks, not required on lakes that do not contain salmon. I know that's a, one of those text boxes that you're gonna ask for public, at the public hearing about. We support this. But this is what happened recently to one of our residents out there that just built a house. They submitted their permits, got all that taken care of. And Thurston County told them that Lake Lawrence was a lake, was a hatchery for king salmon and androgynous trout. That's not true. Scott Nelson, I, I came to one of your meetings over a year ago. I sat in the audience and listened to a State Department of Biology lady come and talk to you about Lake Lawrence. And she said the same.
Barry, I'm gonna have to cut you off. Your time's up.
Okay, Scott. Lake Lawrence is not, is not a habitat for salmon.
Correct. Sorry, you can always submit written comments at any time, so.
I will.
Okay, Patrick Townsend.
Thank you, Commissioners, for a chance to talk. This is Patrick Townsend and Catherine Townsend in Boston Harbor. First off, I'd like to fully express support for Phyllis Farrell's comments from the Sierra Club about the proper approach to the SMP. So just, just want to weigh in, in support of that. Secondly, I think you are probably all aware of the lawsuit against the Army Corps of Engineers around permitting aquaculture activities in Puget Sound and on the coast. The Center for Food Safety and the Coalition to Protect Puget Sound Habitat prevailed in that lawsuit. It was appealed and the Army Corps has withdrawn from that appeal. So the concerns that we've been expressing for a long time about the environmental impacts of aquaculture in Puget Sound have basically been validated by the federal court. There's probably still more time to go on this, but, but it's really important, I think, that we all understand that the concerns that those of us who live in sea and are close to these operations have on the impact on Puget Sound and endangered species have basically been validated by a federal court. So this is likely to go for some time. However, it is certainly the case, I would believe, that the SMP should reflect the findings of the court, the, the concerns about plastics, pesticides, herbicides, the impact on endangered species and forage fish, the entire ecosystem. So it's, it's my belief that Thurston County and its financial and resource investment in creating a new SMP should reflect, you know, what is now clearly validated by that federal court ruling. And I would just encourage the Planning Commission to pause the development of the SMP regulations until this becomes much clearer. The state agencies, Ecology, DFW, DNR, are all going to have to come into alignment around this court ruling that specifically focused on the Clean Water Act and NEPA. And so I just again would encourage a pause and an alignment of the new SMP regulations around that. I know that the county's resources are quite constrained right now, completely understandable. But it makes no sense to me to proceed along a path, a path on the SMP that cannot be sustained based on the most recent findings. So just again encourage the Planning Commissioners to pause this process until it can be properly in alignment with those findings. So thank you very much for a chance to comment.
John Woodford.
Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say, I just got the copy of the draft online midday today and haven't had much chance to review it. But I am rather struck by the lack of inclusion and consideration of citizens' concerns in these documents. If you all remember, on May 15th of 2018, there was a complete shutdown of any stakeholder participation in the process. I found that since then, there's actually a resistance of even hearing public comment. The, of lake, you've only been considering comments from commissioners. And I am relieved to see some recognition of acknowledgement of differences between marine and freshwater, especially non-salmon bearing lakes, as it applies to dock surfaces and so on. But this is pretty small amount of the whole document. I have three key questions that I want to ask Andy and staff in general. Again, I've asked this question before. Why are water oriented industries allowed in shoreline residential SEDs under the, the, the change that was made by Andy? And I don't feel I've ever gotten a proper answer to why that's allowed. It used to be excluded. I also have a question about notification to these 2,700 property owners whose properties are being re-designated. I don't hear anything about a process for doing that. That seems to have kind of dropped by the wayside. And the third item is the pamphlet that we've been promised all along to guide the citizens in the, any kind of development on their property. And guidance for approved plant materials, et cetera. These, these are, are issues that seem to have just dropped away. So I would like to get some answers on that at some point. Thank you.
Phyllis Farrell.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your service and the opportunity to speak again tonight. I sent a letter to the Planning Commission last, late last night, and hopefully you've had time to review it. I'm not going to repeat much of the, you know, information that I had in that letter tonight because you can read it. But, you know, to summarize, I'm just encouraging you to think about how these words of the SMP will be guiding our, our practices for years to come. And, you know, the, the goal is to protect and enhance our shoreline ecological function. Really need to maintain those buffers, which we know help salmon recovery, reducing armoring and ask that the SMP includes some metrics that ensure no net loss. Something that I didn't focus on in my letter was public access. Please ask the staff how the draft is maintaining public access for recreational boaters, kayakers, tubs, swimmers, et cetera. They, this is required in the SMA and I would like to make sure that, that that is a primary concern of the Planning Commission. Thank you for all your work and service. This, it's a lot to read and, and to process. I appreciate your listening and hope that you can include some of our comments and suggestions in that final document. And your recommendations. Thank you.
Bob Hinton.
Good evening. Thank you for, for hearing me. My name is Bob Hinton. My wife Wendy and I, we live on Lake Lawrence, on the east side of the lake in the Lake Lawrence Estates. I just wanted to share some perspectives we have, which is, which I think are really interesting. First and foremost, I want to say that we really are happy with the way Thurston County has worked with us over the years. We moved there in 2007. From a historical point of view, the Lake Lawrence Estates was at one point in time a rural tract of land that was permitted by the county to be developed into six five acre lots right on the water. And so we were the second, we were the second people to move into this neighborhood in 2007. And at that time, you, you know, if you go back in time, if you remember January of 2008, there was a huge windstorm. And that was my first encounter with the county dealing with around 50 trees that fell on the property. Very easy to work with. We went through the permitting process for a dock. Very, very nice to work with. We did a revegetation, reforestation plan. My neighbors in Lake Lawrence Estates are very focused on, you know, ma- making sure that we maintain the area as best we can in terms of what the county wants us to do. But over the years, other people have built in, in the, in the, in the neighborhood. We have six homes there now, each on five acre tracts. And so I've seen the county work with us to develop this into a residential area. It also affects the water. And it's so, right now, our waterfronts are not only full of people kayaking, boating, fishing, but, but they're also very active with our neighbors coming over. And so I, I, I think that originally, I think in 2007 or maybe prior, it could have been seen as rural. But today, I don't see any difference between our waterfront and any other house on Lake Lawrence. And I think what I'm asking is for the Commissioners to, to relook at what's really happened to that side of the lake and, and take, take a look at that from a, from the, the way it's characterized in the, in the SMP. The second thing I think is interesting is, you know, if you look at the racing that goes on in the lake, the permitting that goes on there, there's two, there's two races each year that go, go on and, and they go for two or three days. And so not only is there residential activity, boater activity out on the lake, but also these races are going on. And I can tell you that these boats get within 40 feet of my dock. So this is a very active part of the lake. It's very full of people, kids, all of that. And so no longer is it rural. And it's in my mind, very residential. Thank you.
Ken Rivers.
Oh, I think that might be me. Improper name. I got the label wrong. My name is Dan Moffett. I've spoken to you before. So thank you for letting me comment on this. I, I'm highly interested in this issue because I have both fresh hand saltwater frontage in Thurston County. Freshwater frontages is Lawrence Lake. I want to echo and support really all the past concerns offered by John Woodford of the, with the Long Lake Management District and Barry Halverson with the Lawrence Lake Management District. And I'm a member of that management district, especially want to reinforce that Lawrence Lake is not a source of any type of salmon species whatsoever. Not sure how that information got into anybody's system, but it's something that really needs to be specifically corrected because there's no salmon growing, spawning, whatever at all in Lawrence Lake. Do you have an information request? Again, are you able to respond tonight to a specific question? That I have?
We, not usually during the meeting.
Okay, so how, how, what is the process that I can ask you to respond to a specific question so that I can get a response?
Well, you can either ask staff or you can pose the question here and we can discuss it. Well, probably not tonight, but at some other point.
All right, so I have two sort of specific questions. One is how, what is the process, the procedure? How are these comments reviewed and publicized to the commission? My next question is where or how can I locate the parts or portions or text that's in this draft? That show how the draft responds to the concerns and comments presented by citizens at previous meetings? And so I understand you're not gonna answer me tonight, but I do understand you're gonna discuss it and will give me a response later. Is that correct?
If you talk to staff, they may give you a direct response. We won't give you a direct response.
How do I talk to staff? I'm, I'm a little uneducated on that process.
I, you'll, probably the best way is to email Andrew Defobis.
And could you help me out with the email address?
Are you there, Andrew?
Yeah, I'm here. The easiest, I could either spell it out because I have one of those names. Well, actually, it's on the screen. So if, if you, if you can see the screen, my email address is.
I can't see the screen. All I can see is the timer from, is that, Son, you're running the timer? I don't know. Like, all I can see is the timer.
Okay. Well, I can just say it out. And also you can, you can visit the SMP page and my information's on there as well. But my email address is andrew.defobis, D-E-F-F-O-B-I-S,
So andrew.defobis, D-E-F-F-O-B-I-S.
Correct.
At co.thurston.wa.us.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it. That's all I have for now.
Okay, Robert Jensen.
I've, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I've spoken to the commission and also written comments to the staff previously about this issue. And I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't believe there's anything in the master program that addresses the toxic algae blooms that we've been getting on the lakes here. This last summer, we got another one after I spoke at the last meeting here on Patterson Lake. And this is an emergent issue. The only vehicle that I can under, can I can foresee for controlling this absent sewers on the lake, these lakes particularly, that are getting algae blooms, is to regulate septic tanks and septic systems. And that is because they produce phosphorus, which is the primary causative factor of these algae blooms. And I, I would suggest monitoring and regulating these systems. And even in the build out lakes such as Patterson, there'd be a moratorium on any residents unless they are connected to sewer. So that's basically my pitch. And if I'm wrong, please correct me. Please contact me. But anyway, that's it. And thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
John Pettit.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm John Pettit. I have a, about a half mile of riverfront on the Deschutes River. Many know it as the Deschutes River Ranch. And of course, I have a lot of concern about the elements of the master plan and the limitations. Typically, limitations seem to continue to take more opportunity away as opposed to enhancing them. On my particular property, I open it up to the public in general so they can enjoy it. And over a term of a summertime, I may have thousands, if maybe not 10,000 or 20,000 visits during the summer from people. I don't want to see anything that's gonna limit that type of study. And one of the things I'm concerned about is you have thousands of property owners that are gonna be affected by any changes you have. And your mapping systems and designations of what each property is gonna be in, whether it's under a conservancy, a rule, an environmental status. Every property owner should be entitled to know specifically what the current standing of their property is, what the proposed change would be, how that would affect their ability to use their property between the current level and what would happen if they went into the new level. I mean, if what you're really wanting is to have public comment, then you're going to need to provide people with information. I, I can assure you, being very involved with the county commissioners, there's virtually, nobody knows what's really going on. And I realize you've actually had a lot of people respond tonight. I'm very impressed. But I, I will tell you that if you have, everybody actually know how this may affect them, you will actually get substantial response. If that's what you want to do is hear from the people, then we need to know, I think the county may have some type of initial mapping system. Perhaps they can provide that access to the public so all of us can see what they're proposing and how they think we're supposed to use our property. It's, it doesn't have to be a secret. You don't have to sneak up on us. They just need to be able to let us see whether they're gonna say, well, we talked about recreation, but we're gonna have enough catch 22s that nobody can have recreation. All I want to be able to do is access to see what's being proposed. So if that can be accommodated, that would be greatly appreciated prior to your commission making any decisions. Thank you.
Okay, we've got 206 phone number calling in.
Hello. This is Mark Hancock, representing Sigali Properties. And just a couple, couple of quick comments. I'd like to support the speaker just prior to me as well as John Woodford's comments. First of all, I do also question why stakeholders have been excluded since 2018. The county never finished a, that process back then. They never offered a final report for our stakeholders committee. I was on that committee. And you guys should ask for that re-final report of our stakeholders committee. And if it didn't get finished, the report didn't get finished, maybe the meetings didn't get finished. And maybe John makes a really good point. We ought to be back in action, not watching this from the sidelines. Secondly, the, the 2,700 property owners that John referred to and Andrew's mentioned that are all gonna be down zoned. And I know that's not the correct word, but that's literally what's happening. They're gonna be down zoned. And they have not been sorted out yet. I hope Andrew will just explain this, the county's plan for that tonight. But in the meantime, it sounds like the county doesn't really have a plan to tell them until the last minute, maybe just before the hearing. And this would be very, very problematic for, both for them and for the county when you think about it, given how this would go. Because they have a right to understand situations that relate to each of their specific properties. How and when can that occur? And here's the bottom line. It takes time for each one of them. It takes months to work with the county to figure out what, what the situation on your property is. Furthermore, if you disagree with what the county is doing from their aerial surveys of your property, you'd have to spend thousands of dollars. Each landowner has to spend thousands of dollars on consultants to do reports on their, on their property as to why it shouldn't be classified or reclassified the way the county wants to do it. So how are those, how are those owners gonna be able to do that? The next one, of course, is the county, does the county have the resources to handle 2,700 requests for information and 2,700 challenges of their down zones? So I see the county pushing for a conclusion that really isn't gonna, isn't gonna work for anybody. They're gonna rush this thing through. And at that point, as you probably have been understand, each of those landowners is then stuck with the comp plan amendment process. Because once you push this through and you pass it and it becomes law, then it becomes a comp plan amendment. And that makes the whole thing even worse. Under the current circumstances, a property owner needs months and thousands of dollars. The challenge was, it's already been put on paper. So this whole process is messed up and you really shouldn't push this thing through in a big hurry because you're gonna, those people are really gonna have a problem. Thanks a lot.
Could you identify yourself for the record, please? Could you uh, identify yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, I did. Mark Hancock, representing Sigali Properties.
Okay, I, I wasn't sure. I didn't think I heard that. So.
How do, how do I unmute, by the way?
Uh, God, phone call 360 number.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jay Nelson. Uh, I live on the southeastern side of Lake Lawrence. Um, I won't reiterate or rehash everything that's already been said. I want to specifically say that I concur with uh, those who have spoken before, particularly Mr. Woodford, Mr. Halverson, uh, Mr. Hinton and the last two uh, gentlemen. Uh, I, to, to be brief, I, I just want to um, point out and pick up on what Mr. Hinton said. We live in Lake Lawrence Estates. Uh, that's the L L A one designation. Uh, that designation was um, um, determined to be conservancy in the original 1990 plan. And then I understand uh, from Andrew that it was updated, or at least the, the proposed designation of rural conservancy uh, right now is based on information from 2013. Um, and frankly, I would just like the commission uh, to know that the 2013 reality of, of what the shoreline looked like then, particularly where we live on Lake Lawrence Estates, doesn't reflect the reality now. Um, so to that end, um, if the commission could go back and take a look at that uh, question where we came up with that, the current proposed designation of uh, rural conservancy, uh, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Curtis Cleveland.
Good evening, commissioners. Um, resident of Lake Lawrence. I'm on the finance committee for the L M D out here. Just uh, like to speak in support of uh, Mr. Halverson, Mr. Woodford. Actually, uh, Mr. Jackson had to say, and Mr. Hancock also, they, I think they had excellent points. I can add just two cents, uh, the idea that once upon a time, there was a uh, maybe a fish hatchery on this lake, but there has not been one, any sign of one uh, for at least, I think a decade. I don't think I'm wrong about that. So anyway, I'll keep it short. Um, it'd be nice to have that information correct when you're considering uh, the situation. That's it. Um, thanks and have a good evening.
Okay, and RG.
Hey, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, yeah, yeah. My name is Rad Gikis. I'm also a resident of Lake Lawrence, uh, the east side, Lake Lawrence Estates, uh, really calling in um, to uh, to reinforce the message that, uh, that Mr. Hinton uh, discussed earlier, most recently, Mr. Nelson, as well as the other comments of uh, Mr. Woodford, Mr. Halverson. Um, the, the data being used for the redesign, redesignation um, is outdated. Um, there hasn't been a lot of explanation in terms of uh, of how that logic was reached, going from a conservancy to the rural conservancy. So again, asking for uh, for just a little bit of education, a little bit better explanation uh, on our part for uh, for what is a residential neighborhood now, uh, still being termed at least in the draft as a rural conservancy. That's all I've, uh, I've got on this one. Uh, just looking for an answer on that one in the future. Thanks.
Okay, uh, Joseph O'Keefe.
Hey there, commissioners. Thank you so much for your service, uh, and for listening to us tonight. I'm Joseph O'Keefe. My wife Allison and I own just over half an acre of undeveloped property on, on Lake Lawrence. And as, as we're looking to build our dream home and move our family down there, I'm really concerned uh, about the, the SMP program and our ability to actually effectively uh, build um, in a way that's going to be affordable and is not going to require us to have to jump through hoop after hoop after hoop. Uh, and, and my take is, you know, in conjunction with uh, with Mr. Woodford and Mr. Halverson, uh, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Hancock, I, I have serious concerns. I really believe that, that the guidelines should be no more restrictive than what the Department of Ecology outlines. Uh, and I really think we need to have uh, more time uh, to consider the path forward. We should have uh, more transparency as to how it's going to affect uh, property owners uh, and more opportunity to provide comment on that. Thank you for your time.
Joseph Heilman. Joseph Heilman, you're muted. Okay, uh, Joseph Heilman. If you, uh, you're muted, if you're on your computer, you can hold your spacebar down to talk. Okay, one more time, Joseph Heilman. Okay, um, so with that, let's go ahead and move on. Um, I'm going to suggest that since we're past seven o'clock already, we move forward to our public hearing. Anybody have any objections? Okay. So tonight we're holding a public hearing on this comp or the capital improvement program 2021 through 2026. Um, this is a virtual public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined by Zoom, phone, email in comments or mailed in comments. If you wish to testify, please choose the raise your hand option. If you are dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. I will call your name and unmute when it's your turn to speak. Make sure to also choose star six to unmute yourself if calling in. If you have issues speaking or being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting. And I'm assuming this is Polly's number. So do we have a different number to call in tonight?
Um, they can call my number. It's um, Sonya Katie here. The number is three, six, zero, nine, seven, two, six, nine, zero, one.
Okay. Um, and as most of you have seen already, we have the timer up. Um, you have three minutes to testify. I'll call out names for testimony. When you hear your name, please unmute yourself to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And Sonya, if you'd like to go over the timer.
Um, yeah, when, for the first two and a half minutes, the light will be green. And when it reaches two and a half minutes, it turns yellow and at three minutes, it turns red.
Okay. I will now open the public hearing and we will begin with a staff presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. Jennifer Davis, Community Planning Manager. I don't have a PowerPoint this evening. Uh, this hearing is to again, take public comment on the annual update to the Thurston County Capital Improvement Program. That's appendix G of our comprehensive plan. The planning commission was briefed on this update on September 16th with the help of representatives from our various county departments who are also here tonight, in case there are questions after the hearing. Uh, the proposed update repeals and replaces the previous 2020 to 2025 C I P. This is a six-year financing plan for county capital facilities. It is required element of the comprehensive plan under the Growth Management Act. Staff received no written or emailed public comment on this draft. Um, we did publish a hearing notice in the Olympian and issued a press release and posted the changes on our webpage. Um, I do want to point out that in the um, last week, actually, uh, staff received some updated information from some of our facilities of other public entities. We call them Tumwater School District, Griffin School District, and Inter-City Transit, which all recently updated their own capital facilities plans, uh, which is usually the case during this process. And that will just require us to update the project lists and costs reported in chapter eight before it uh, goes to the next phase of this project, which is to go to the Board of County Commissioners for review. So I just wanted to point out those very minor changes that are just informational only. Um, and that's all I have.
Okay, um, we're going to take public comment. I see uh, Joseph Heilman's hand is raised again. If you wish to speak on the uh, item that we're doing the hearing on now, please go ahead. And still muted. Okay, I'll ask again. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing and we will move on to uh, our discussion. Anybody have any discussion?
Does, does this update normally lack controversy?
Yes. Not always, in case there's some, you know, very particularly big new project of a lot of public interest. The, the reason it lacks controversy by the time it gets to this point is that the various departments do a lot of public outreach in building and developing and prioritizing all of the individual projects that then get kind of summarized and reflected in this annual update. So a lot of that work is done uh, through other means previous to getting to you. So, um, that's why.
I'm just kind of curious. A lot of this, um, a lot of the projects seem to be uh, dependent upon grants, funding and those types of things. Is, is that, I know it's pretty common, but does it usually come through? It seems like we're just kind of running a budget deficit, hoping money comes or like a wishlist is basically what we're, we're looking at here or I'm looking at. Is that kind of what we're, we're around?
Well, it's not necessarily a wishlist. A lot of these have secured funding. Um, where there, where there are a future grants that are anticipated, um, those might be uh, specified, but I think for a lot of these projects, um, they are, they have funding plans that are pretty cooked. And I'm going to invite anyone from any of the departments who is on the line, who may have a future grant funded project who wants to speak to that aspect of it. I'm not her, sure who the best staffer would be for that. Putting out the call. Don't make me pick on someone.
I can, I can jump in.
Thanks, Robin.
Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager. Uh, and I would say that um, for those projects that are grant funded, if the county does not receive the grant, we won't go forward with the project. So we're not running a budget deficit in our capital budget.
Okay, any other questions or discussion?
I have a question. Those projects where the grant is actually not received, do the funds that have been allocated at then become discretionary? What happens to them?
So if we don't receive a grant, then the county doesn't have the money. And if the grant was only part of the project, um, say a road project, for example. Um, if we don't get the grant and part of the money was coming out of the road fund, the money just remains in the road fund and waits to be allocated or it waits until we get the grant for that project or, um, but it remains in the fund.
Then it becomes a discretionary fund that we used as needed.
Uh, right, on roads, because roads is a restricted fund in that example.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? So I would accept a motion to recommend approval of the 2021 to 2026 capital improvement program, repealing and replacing appendix G of the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as amended.
I shall move, Rob.
Ten second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries and now we can go back to Andrew and the work session on the shoreline master program.
I just want to say thank you to all the department representatives who showed up tonight and thank you to Robin for helping answer those questions.
Okay.
Information.
Okay, hope everyone can see and hear me. Um, so tonight I'm essentially uh, giving you an introduction to the newest version of the shoreline master program draft. Uh, it's a document that we will use in future work sessions with the planning commission. Um, the planning commission did receive one written comment for this meeting uh, that was emailed to you and posted on our website. And I think the commenter also addressed that um, earlier today. So just wanted to make that clear as well. Um, and I also want to reiterate that all the written comments that we receive are collected by staff and are forwarded to the planning commission. These are all part of the record and part of the planning commission's deliberations as they work through the planning commission draft. So anything that comes in uh, is batched and becomes part of that record. Okay, so the, the newest version of the document was posted today on the planning commission website along with a brief memo. And it was also linked from the shoreline master program project page. So what that draft is, uh, what I've gone ahead and done is go back through my notes from the past planning commission meetings we've had and made sure that all the changes that I had recorded uh, from your discussions are in that draft um, to the best of my ability. And they're either as text edits that you'll see and strike through and underline, or they are um, option boxes for further discussion by the planning commission or uh, consideration from the public. Uh, and there's also comments in there from ecology, including items that are on the periodic review checklist for the draft. Uh, it's a requirement of the update. So things that I knew were going to be requirements and boxes that are needed to be checked on the ecology side are, I did the best I could to get those in there as well. So how the changes are showcased, um, as anyone who's looked at the draft knows, there are different colors of the draft or different colors of edits that represent different rounds of review. There is a cover sheet on the document that, that attempts to explain that. Uh, you're all familiar with the red and blue text. Uh, those are edits that were made during a, a first round of review. And then some of the more recent edits were made in green text that we started working through last spring and summer. Um, several meetings ago, I was asked to showcase the newer edits in a new color, um, so that folks could kind of tell which edits came from which round. And so after that meeting, I started using um, a pink text, doing my best to make sure that um, any changes that were made before that conversation, but since you had last seen the document are showing up in that pink. So that when you look at the document, anything that's new should be pink. Any other colors from previous round of edits, uh, and you should be able to locate it in a previous version of the draft if you're looking for it. Um, so to touch on some of the items that were incorporated uh, based on planning commission and public input. Uh, as you heard some folks talk about tonight, there is an option in the draft to consider a variety of different terms when we're looking at how we describe legally existing structures. Uh, non-conforming structures is one way to do that. Legally existing is one way to do that. And the draft also includes an option for folks to consider putting their input in on using the term conforming. So that is in that draft that you see. Uh, I also clarified when reconstructing or rebuilding a structure in the existing. I also clarified when reconstructing or rebuilding a structure in the existing footprint is exempt from a shoreline development permit or substantial development permit, excuse me, and included some options to remove a requirement that that requires grading on decks. If the decks are in non-semen bearing lakes. There's a clarification as to when residential development standards apply to existing structures versus new structures that came out of a planning commission meeting from many months ago. And also options based on planning commission discussion to consider decks adjacent to residential structures to be of curvaceous construction if they're not compacted underneath and water can get through. And also an option to have, you know, if you're putting a deck in the buffer because you need to reduce it, having a default, starting at a larger size in the draft, so that there is an option in there for that. There's an option to consider having docs be permitted in the natural environment, which did not exist in the draft before. And and also removing language that required buoys to be considered before someone was permitted to do a docker appear that that came out as well, or an option to remove it. So what will happen next is the planning commission can take some time to dive in and read through it. And we will begin working through any questions and comments you have at the next meeting on November 4th. You can let me know what else you'd like to see incorporated into this draft as we prepare it for public hearing, which can of course include any public comment that you've received and worked on to date and anything that just comes from your reading of the newest draft. Once we have the public hearing draft and you all are fairly satisfied with that, we do have a public outreach plan that we've talked about here before. So that includes specific public outreach to shoreline property owners who are affected by the map changes. That has not gone away. That's just something that has not occurred yet. We're not quite to that open house. And then we're doing a virtual open house, which will include a variety of educational materials, including fact sheets. One of which is about shoreline permits, trying to connect people with information that will help them understand what's in the draft, the different types of permits and what those what those requirements may be, and at least where they can find that information, because it can be very hard to boil it all down into a fact sheet. And so once we get closer to that open house, there will be public notifications specifically to people who may be more affected and also press releases will go out and et cetera. So in the time between now and your next meeting, I will be working on some minor amendments to the critical areas ordinance to bring forward that go along with all of this. The Shoreline Master Program incorporates the critical areas ordinance language or some of it by reference. And so some cross references and some other edits are needed in the critical areas ordinance to go along with that. And so what you'll see is proposed changes or edits, you know, and strike through underline that you can dive into as well as part of this whole update. So that is the introduction that I have for you tonight. Again, it's 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 just been posted, you know, not expecting folks to have dove in and read it just came out today. So take your time to work through it and we'll start at the next meeting. And are there any questions for me?
Andy, are you gonna, we're working on the next two meetings to do this. Are you going to set some, you know, what chapters we're going to work on in each one? Because obviously, I mean, trying to get through the whole thing in two weeks, because you might go further than what we've looked at. You know, I'd like to see us say, okay, we're going to do 100 to 300 first meeting and 400 to 500 the second meeting, whatever, but so that we can take appropriate time in considering all of the comments that people have sent in plus our own.
Yeah, and I think I, you know, I'm interested in what the planning commission thinks about about that. My initial thoughts were to to start at the beginning, right? And kind of work through and say, you know, let's talk about chapter 100 and who has questions, comments on that, who wants to questions on what they see, wants to talk about introducing new text, et cetera, and then move on through the document that way. So I have not set a specific, you know, 100 to 300 at the next meeting, but I think working through the document beginning to end, that is certainly what I envision. So I'm interested in further thoughts you might have on that as a as a body.
Well, I'd like to see setting limits as to what we're going to go through at each meeting so that we can do a good job of reviewing that section and you know, if you jump a chapter ahead of where we've looked, what we had time to review, then we're not giving good input. So knowing that we are going to do chapter 100, 200, 300, 1234, whatever that is, then we can focus on those chapters and worry about the other chapters after that. Any other comments?
I think you got a great idea there. I guess my concern is if we say we're going to do one through three, and we get a lot of questions or a lot of fourth, and we only get through one, how do, I'm trying to figure out how to kind of keep it moving, but not, yeah, not cut something short either.
Well, I would assume that if we can't get to, let's say we do one through 300, or say we're going to, at least we're prepared for it. And so if we only get 100 or 100 and 200 or 100, 200 and 300 done in that meeting, that's fine. But if we short of that, that's okay. But at least we're prepared.
What you're saying is put a limit on it.
You're right.
How does that feel to the rest of the commission? I'm always looking for multiple not head nods to see if we should.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, if we can get through more than the than the projected amount, that's fine. If we don't, then we can go back and finish it.
So what makes sense for the first meeting, Andy? You know, the kind of the depth and breadth of some of these chapters and some are more administrative than others.
Uh, sure. And yeah, and because of that, I would propose for the next meeting, putting on 100 to 400. If the planning commission is comfortable with that, because I think 100 is definition and 200 is shoreline jurisdiction, 300 is policies and then 400 is general regulations. So I think, yeah, I that makes sense to me as a bundle, to be optimistic that perhaps we could get through that or at least have that on the agenda. I wouldn't, I wouldn't dream that we would go further than that in one meeting. That would be my recommendation if you guys are open to that.
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
So I, you know, I that I know that I just need to be prepared for 100 through 400. If we only get to 300, well, that's fine.
And I can also, when we send our web mail, you know, I can word it such that it's the planning commission will begin working through the document and may cover 1 to 400 or something like that, so that it gives the expectation that you're starting. But you know, you're going to get as far as as as.
What you're saying is that's that will be our intent.
Correct.
We have lots of good intentions around the SMP and our schedule. I do want to say, can I just, I want to take a moment. We heard a lot of public comment this evening around things that I think should be clarified for the record. I think I think you all know this as commissioners, you know, we've been very transparent throughout the building of the Shoreline Master Program, more transparent than probably in most other code changes and complan changes we make before we've gotten even to a public hearing draft. We've had multiple iterations. All public comment has been received, categorized, put on the web. We've provided web mail updates to interested party. Our goal here is to get us to a place where we have a public hearing draft. And that's what you guys are knee deep in right now. It's getting to that place and it's so appreciated. But we got to get to that place so we can do our public outreach campaign. The public outreach campaign we have planned, which includes the direct mailing to folks whose mapping changes may have been updated or proposed to be updated. Interactive maps people can review to see exactly what some of the public commenters asked to see how things have changed from the existing rules to the proposed rules, fact sheets going over all of these different topics. How do we cover no net loss? What does permitting look like? What do you do for existing structures? All of that stuff we are, we have in development, we're ready to roll, but we have to get to that public hearing draft. So we have an agreed to draft that we're going to widely distribute and post on the website and invite all of that broad community public comment. So while we desperately appreciate all of the people who are really engaged in the project have come to these meetings, provide their comments, very smart informed comments at the beginning of every meeting. We hope you're taking those in. We've been taking those in. We can only do what we can do. We have to get to that stage where we have a final public hearing draft that invites the entire community to comment and to see all the changes. And so that remains the plan that is going to happen. We're in the process to get there. And I just wanted that to be very clear for everyone on the record.
Thank you. That was helpful.
Andy, will you want any more of our comments or questions before our next meeting then? I feel bullied. I don't want to do with anything.
You feel free to send them to me, but it's, you can, by all means, you can send them to me and you can let me know if you wish them to be distributed to all of the other planning commissioners ahead of the meeting. I'm happy to do that. But just know that while I will read it, I, you know, it'll take the direction of the planning commission as a body saying, we love what, we love everything Eric said, go ahead and put that in there. So yeah, go ahead and email me. And then, yeah, we can address them at the at the meeting.
Okay, I just don't want to get put it down with, you know, 45 minutes of appeasing Eric because he's got three pages of stuff he wants to go through.
I will, I will read it and then we can all discuss it when the time comes.
Anybody else? So sounds like our homework for our next meeting is chapters 100 through 400. We get that far, we get that far. If we don't, then we'll just pick off where we left off or pick up where we left off at the next meeting. So staff updates.
I do have a staff update. So as the planning commission may be aware, the Thurston County Habitat Conservation Plan was submitted in July to U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for review. It's under their review and they have launched their formal environmental review process under NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. And as part of that process, they will be hosting a couple of informational public meetings coming up. And so those meetings are going to be, you can go to either one, October 26th and October 28th. I'm going to pull up my webpage. And they're from 6:00 PM and you can find the Zoom links to them if you visit thurstonplanning.org and go to the Habitat Conservation Plan page. The Zoom links are posted right there. And the purpose of those meetings is to help the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service scope an environmental impact statement that they must prepare for this draft habitat conservation plan. So you can get your questions answered from the federal government and also Thurston County staff will be there to help answer questions. And it's meant to be informational to help them gather the stuff they need to start to draft this required environmental impact statement. So I want to make sure the public knew about that and the planning commission knew about that. The other update is I want to thank Chair Nelson for attending a briefing last week with the Board of County Commissioners on the 2020 complan update where mineral lands was discussed. And he provided, he represented the planning commission and your recommendation very well. The Board of County Commissioners is reviewing the complan updates, including mineral lands designation. And I think they will be setting a public hearing for later in November and we will, I'm sure, get lots of public comment. And then they will have to decide how they want to pursue, looking at all of the options that were provided to them. And they're taking all of the options that you looked at for the planning commission recommendation. All of those are moving forward to get public comment at the board's public hearing. But we're being very clear which of those options are planning commission recommendations. So thanks Scott for being there. I think there's nothing like having a planning commissioner there to represent your perspective when those briefings happen. I think that's all I had to share.
Okay, calendar. Is there anybody that is not available on November 4th? Okay, is there anybody that is not available on November 18th? Hey, it sounds like we'll have quorum for both of those nights. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
Jennifer, will we play a part in this habitat conservation thing?
The the part you will play will come next year. It's on the docket for an input. There has to be an implementing ordinance for the habitat conservation plan. So the plan, it's sort of a parallel process. The federal government is reviewing it and going through the environmental review. And at the same time, staff has to begin development of an implementation ordinance that makes sure that our critical areas ordinance basically references the habitat conservation plan and all of the new processes that will be in place under the plan. And that will come through the planning commission. So you'll get a lot more information on that and how it's going to work at the counter when someone comes in for a permit later next year.
Anybody else? Okay, it's 7:36 and we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.